Okay, I'll call this meeting to order at 5:30. Is there any public input? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of December 7?
So moved.
We hear a second.
Second.
Any errors, corrections, or omissions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of December 10th, School Board and Budget Committee meeting?
So moved.
We hear a second.
Second.
Any errors, corrections, or omissions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Under new business, we have Crusade to End Hunger Initiative. Emily Platt, Vanessa Sandville, and students.
Our students are exiting practice, so we can start, or we can give them a few minutes. They're right up there, I think they're just leaving practice and we'll be doing this.
They're just leaving practice? Well, I suppose we could wait for them and...
There they are.
Hello.
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 Thanks for dressing up.
(laughing).
So they just, just seconds ago, finished Foresty Basketball Club. Let's introduce them. I'm Emily Platt, I'm the advisor of LHS Student Council. I'm Vanessa Sandville, I'm the advisor of the LHS National Honor Society. And the four students that are here are seniors, and they're members of both organizations, and this is their presentation. So I'll let you start, Kuba, and you can introduce yourself, and when we get to Theo, then she can start.
Hi, I'm Kuba Kupkowski, and I am the Student Council Vice President and member of National Honor Society.
I'm Chad Booty, I'm a class rep for the senior class, and I'm part of the National Honor Society as well.
I'm Ethan Elligwood, I'm in Student Council and NHS.
I'm Theo Augustine, I'm NHS President and NHS Rep, Student Council. So this is a presentation on a couple things. One of them is the Crusade to End Hunger, another is the Mobile Pack event that we did. So a big part of the organization, both, is service. Okay, and then also, it's their scholarship, leadership, service, and character, but mostly the presentation we're giving on is about our service that we do. One of our big things this year was Feed My Starving Children Mobile Pack.
Today, around the world, there is a food problem. There's a little girl waking up in the Philippines with her stomach growling, and a mother in Kenya putting her son to bed without any dinner. And there are people like you wondering what they can do to help, how they can have an impact on the lives of children like these. And there is a unique, tangible way to connect them by volunteering at Feed My Starving Children Mobile Pack. A Mobile Pack is an opportunity to pack thousands of these sustaining meals in your own community.
A Mobile Pack has such a tremendous opportunity to bring wealth into people all over the United States and to give them an opportunity to make a real difference.
It doesn't matter how old or how young you are, everybody has some gift that they can give.
You get high school kids, you get grade school kids, families, you have homework to do. It's amazing. I think anybody can do it.
We got rice, and there's soy, and there's some vegetables, and then there's chicken burger.
And when my husband and I were done last year, it was like, we want to keep going, we want to package more meals, you get such an adrenaline built up.
It's not that difficult.
I think this is a great chance to volunteer for anybody, because it's only giving up two hours of your time, and the difference you can make is sometimes feeding 50 or 100 kids for an entire year. There's not many things you can do in life that you can say, if you only give up this short segment of time, this is the impact that you can have.
Feed My Starving Children is unique in three ways. First, we have taken science and technology to create the perfect food for a malnourished child. Second, we use volunteers who come in and package that food, and then we distribute that food through a unique system of embedded missionaries and NGOs around the world. That allows our partners to do the sustainable activities like healthcare, education, business development, for long-term, sustainable projects.
You have the opportunity to raise the money to help cover the cost of the meals packed. The average person packs about one box per session, which costs around $50.
I recommend that we take little jars and put them on our kitchen table, and every time we have a meal, just think, if we put a quarter in, which would pay more than a meal for a child, it just seems so minute.
It was a quarter at a time, that turned into a couple thousand dollars at a time.
It's a good opportunity to serve, and what better opportunity than to feed starving kids?
I think it changes your perspective on everyday living.
This is a fantastic opportunity for our kids in our school, to learn that there are kids out there that need our help, and they're learning that helping out is actually kind of work.
Yeah, we're having a lot of fun.
This is an effective way for us to do mission work that gets beyond our borders.
When you're thinking of other people, you're not thinking of yourself.
So it's just kind of an experience for all of us.
In just two hours, you can impact the lives of people across the street and across the world. To sign up or donate to an event in your area, go to fmsc.org/mobilepacktoday.
So this is the first year that we did it, only this year the NHS did it. It was just the NHS senior members, and there were enough meals that were packed during the Mobile Pack to feed 95 children in Haiti for one whole year. This is the second year, last year, again, just the seniors won this year, and enough meals were packed during the Mobile Pack event to feed 139 children in Uganda for one year this year. And then this was last year, and it was really neat, because not only did we get to do an earlier induction, so we could take the junior members of NHS as well as the senior members, but we also invited the LHS Student Council to go with us. And these are some of the...
Action shots?
Yep. That. And 116,640 meals were packed during the two-day Mobile Pack event, enough to feed 319 children for one year. 120 meals were packed in our session alone.
And this is a student's first faculty volleyball tournament that we've been doing the past two years. Yeah, and it's for Crusade to End Hunger. To participate, you get a team of like six or eight, and then you get to bring in either a dollar or a non-perishable food item to play. It's just really fun. Teaching one of us last year, sad though.
And the year before.
And the year before. And that was the team I was on.
The runners-up.
This year and last year, we've been going to Go Orange, also Crusade to End Hunger. And it's because one out of every six Americans is food insecure, and a child should go to bed hungry. The first year we did it, we had it three days, the 7th, 14th, and 21st of November. And teachers and staff the first year contributed $250, it was $5 if you donated, when you wore jeans. And then this year, we only did it once, but those were because the other two days we were also running donation things as well, such as the Mason Trump. And even though we only did it for one day, we still raised $150.
Something new this year is the money from the Jeans Day went to the Good Neighbor Food Pantry in Franconia, and that was used to make Thanksgiving baskets that were given to local families in need. The previous year, we donated a bit to the White Mountains Christian Church here in Littleton.
Another thing that we do at the school is we run a holiday drive. We kind of have a competition throughout the school with the advisories. It's like a week-long event, I would say, and what we do is, we ask the kids and different advisers to bring as much food as we can, and the advisory that brings in the most can are non-perishable food items. They win a prize. This year was movie passes for Jack Jr. It's a pretty good outcome every year. This was last year. 125 non-perishable food items were donated to the church, White Mountain Christian Church, that was last year. And then this year, we have 405, which is a similar outcome, a little less, but it was still pretty good. It helps a lot.
And we are ending with this quote from Barack Obama.
The students wanted to share with you what they've been doing as part of the leadership organizations, and also encouraging students to participate in faculty, school-wide.
Do you have any questions about anything that we talked about?
I think it's great. Done a good job.
Thank you.
Where do you go to do the packing of the food?
The Mobile Pack, the last two years have been in Essex, Vermont. However, unfortunately, Essex did not raise enough money to hold a packing event at the time we usually did it, so Vanessa Sandville found another one a little later in Barrington, New Hampshire. We want to.
And it was hosted by the company TurboCam, and the owner and president of that company is really committed to community service. And it was really apparent when we were there, because a lot of the employees were working, and they couldn't get over that we brought a bus from Littleton, New Hampshire to come to that event. So they had a lot of great things to say about our kids, and I want to thank Mr. Smith for kind of getting the bus moving along, so that it was something that we didn't have to coordinate parents driving. It made it a lot easier for everyone.
It sounds like it's growing every year.
It is.
Right? You have more and more kids participating. That's great.
And every year that I've brought students, they are absolutely amazed that we come from that far away. It's, you know, it's two hours to get to Essex from here, and again, two hours this year to go to Barrington. And typically, it's families or other organizations, a lot of church organizations, one of the few schools that participate. It's on a Saturday, they give up time to go. But again, it's an important part of both of the organizations, it's part of our core values, that we strive for service, the giving back to the community, both locally and then globally. So we're able to do both through the Crusade for End Hunger.
And they got to try the meals. They were good.
They were actually really good. Like, no doubt. It's a really fun event, to just go and just know how much you're changing and helping in just two hours every time.
Very grand, fun, and a good example. Well, Emily, thank you very much for representing the community like that. And I really liked your presentation, it's very well put together. So, thank you.
Thank you for letting us take some time tonight to present this to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll let these boys get showers. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is the business report, manifesto going around, treasurer's
Treasurer's report for the month of November was completed and submitted to you. No major issues this month. We started with $1,209,503, and ended up with $1,359,978. We did receive an adequacy eight payment, the next one, I believe, will be March, so that'll be quiet for a while now. And some tuition payments, there was a vote, there was a vote payment that came under tuition from the prior year. Second page was the year-to-date numbers, so we tally that on a monthly basis to let you know where we stand. And again, this is from the receipt side. This is reconciling bank account, bank statement to bank statement, rather than to the book as our bank reconciliations usually do. Are there any questions?
Warren, you want to talk about superintendent search?
Superintendent.
Oh, the superintendent search, okay, I'm sorry. Well, we have met and gone over a lot of the applicants. Applications are still coming in, and so we have a couple of meetings scheduled in January now, and we're moving along. We have a fair number of applicants, 29 so far.
Okay, Rick.
My presentation this evening is fairly brief, and I'm real wanting to focus, I think everything that's written here is pretty self-explanatory. You can see I added some statistics on student enrollment changes over the, since, over the school year, since school started. You can see that 26 students have joined Lakeway since the first day of school, and 12 have left. And we have a real anomaly, as you can see, with October, 14 new students actually registered in our school. But that was interesting, we've talked about those at previous meetings. I think everything else is pretty self-explanatory, our technology. Pilot program has actually started, the computers arrived a little ahead of schedule, and the students actually got to work on them for the very first time today. So we're very pleased, and thanks to Adam for making that happen right away. And our goal with the teachers is that they will identify all of the end-of-the-year instructional goals for the students. By the end of January, they'll identify what those are, and those are the goals that they'll want to achieve with those students by the end of June. And, yeah, but they're going to actually start using the computers even sooner than they thought. So very excited to have one, again, we have one on every student's desk, including our ESL and special education programs as well. So that's very exciting. Now I want to introduce our three third-grade teachers, so, four third-grade teachers, sorry. So we have Janet Draprow, Brendan Jettie, Casey Pilgrim, and Barbara Johnson. And they started a program last year that they shared with me and Crystal and a number of other people. We came in and watched it and were very impressed, and I actually made a videotape of it, and shared it with our faculty earlier this month. And I will let them explain what it's all about. It's a very short video, it's only about two minutes long, but I think it's pretty powerful.
Okay, so Rick asked us to come in and share what we do for our monthly third-grade celebrations. And last year, we decided we wanted to really bring the third-grade community together, and so each month, at the end of the month, we have a celebration of academic achievement. So we have awards like hundreds on all your spelling tests for the month of November, or achievement on the unit math tests, doing your homework every day. I mean, that's something that everybody can achieve, you know, so they can earn rewards for that. And it's just a quick celebration. We give out certificates for the different goals that the students need, and the students just cheer for each other, and we just really talk about celebrating each other, and that academic excellence is cool. And this year, our tie very nicely donated a banner for the third-grade wing that says "Welcome to Third Grade, Where Excellence is Cool." And, you know, just to bring, you know, the students together, and just to see their faces as their name is called, we cheer for every single one of them. These are really awards that are not, you get one just for participation, I mean, you have to accomplish a goal. And, you know, there are, we give special awards for students who really have shown that they tried hard for that month. And last year, we had students who would write songs about doing homework or test-taking. We practice our multiplication skills, each class will get up and do a six-count by, a seven-count by. They recite poetry, or maybe read something that they've written, and it's just a nice little celebration at the end of every month. The students look forward to it, carries over into the classroom, you know, we have a really great answer, we celebrate our classmates, and we all cheer for each other. And I don't know if I left anything out. Yeah, and it's just a short video, but it, we really feel like it's brought our third grade together, you know, and it's just been a fun thing that we do.
One of the things that ties into it all for the teachers, I think, who had training with the fours, and the fours really emphasize the importance of celebrating your successes. And we've tried to encourage that and do that as much as we can at Lakeway, when we get test results, school-wide results, we've actually involved the kitchen and making gigs, things like that. And the third-grade team has really embraced this, and I think, as Barbara said, it's not, these are not participation awards, these are based on hardcore data for the month, and if you watch closely and look at the excitement on the kids' faces, is they either get an award themselves, or they just cheer for their peers, I think is, you know, very stimulating. So the sound is not the greatest. This was about, these ceremonies probably last 25 minutes, and so for, so I've narrowed it down to about two minutes, but I think you'll enjoy just seeing what they've done. Talk a little more about it while I...
Let me ask a question, when did this start? We started last year. Oh, last year. So last September. I mean, this year, we started school in August, so we had, what, three days of school? Three days of school, and we had an August celebration. We gave them goals that they could work for, five spelling words, learn, quiz them on their doubles, so, you know, we really made it so that everybody could really get an award for that very first week of school, so that kind of got the ball rolling for this year. So you're a model for the other grades, and so you can play the game. I think every grade has it.
Appropriate music for this thing.
Celebrate excellence in learning, we celebrate how wonderful you are at the NHS, we are celebrating how great you are, so proud of yourselves, if you can't afford it, then that's tough, and that's a great job. And, uh, we're grateful you're here, and we want to award to tightly fight with your leadership and our administration. Oh, man, one of the crowds, I'm just really grateful for our presence, spelling, oh, my God, some people like us, that's not my, you can't all get it, but, yeah. I'd like these people to be, uh, true they're for me. Be your wish, ah! And shine a little bit. What's up, here? Hey, go look at it! Oh, I think this guy, he's not that good, he's looking good! I sure love eating, where are you? Nine, eight, seven, six, four, five, fifty-four, sixty-three, seventy-two, eighty-one, ninety!
So I just thought it was very commendable how much, how excited our four teachers have gotten their kids about learning, and how much pride they are taking in that, and I certainly wanted to share that with you, so I hope you enjoyed that. Thank you, ladies.
Great, feel-good moments.
So that's it for my presentation.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Kelly. I'm supposed to follow that? No, that's a presentation that you can watch.
Thanks for getting me here.
I know. So my report this month mainly focused on a dynamic learning map, the results from this past year. We had, well, the dynamic learning map is the alternate assessment for identified students that are qualifying cognitive and developmental disabilities. In the past, teachers used to have to prepare, or case managers would prepare a portfolio to show progress, and really, we were rated on how well the teacher could put the portfolio together, not necessarily how well the student was making progress, or whether or not the student was making progress. Last year, they changed it to the dynamic learning maps, which is an online assessment that students take. So it is a better measure of their abilities. And they're rated in four levels of progress: emerging, approaching the target, at the target, and advancing. And so, of the five students that qualified to take the assessment last year, I showed you on the report breakdown of the results, you know, just, and I did want to point out that even though a student is at the emerging level, it's really based on the individual student's needs. And so, I mean, that's where they're at now, and we just hope to continue to move them forward. I also provided you with a sample copy of what the assessment results look like, that we get back on each individual child, in the areas of English Language Arts and Mathematics. And that allows a teacher to look at the essential skills that the students mastered, and where they may have fell short, or where they may need continued support. And so we can tailor our curriculum around that, we can look at goals and objectives to maybe help the student improve. And today, we had some of our case managers across the district, Eric, myself, and some of our related service providers, from three to four, they took the, it's a webinar that they have to do every year on the DLM, and it's kind of boring, it's really boring, actually. But in order to administer the assessment, they have to take that, take a look at a quiz or test at the end. So they did that today, so we're in pretty good shape for administering this this year. And we can only have 1% of our total population participate in the alternate assessment in order for our scores to count, so. So this year, I think we're estimating between five and seven students, district, in grades three through eight and 11. So I don't know if you have specific questions about that.
And you just, you choose those students based upon their needs, basically, is that how it works?
Yeah, it's an IEP themed decision, and so any student that has an intellectual disability, formerly known as mental retardation, they would qualify- they would qualify. And some students with other developmental disabilities would qualify. But there is a checklist of criteria that students have to meet in order to be eligible to take the assessment.
I'll start my report off with the enrollment figures are at 337. We dropped a couple of people, but still, I think, constant in what we're doing. Do want to draw your attention to the parent and school and community connection. Mentioned the National Honor Society Dinner and the annual holiday concert that was just held December 15th. If you had the opportunity to attend that, you can see that our music department is really growing. People are actually having fun performing. It's now encompasses, the staff has a rendition, and have a lot of fun with that, working with the kids. And also, Mrs. Healy's French class. So, it gets bigger each year as each thing goes on. So, I think it's something to be very proud of. Student of the Year interviews are being held. The award was given to Danny Grammer. That's a $1,000 scholarship, which will be presented in January at the Mount Washington Hotel with the chamber. And I'll begin again, the dessert with the principal, that will talk about the newly adopted attendance policy. Those letters will go out during Christmas time, and so parents will have a chance to look at them, digest it a little bit because of the holidays and so forth, and then during the week of January 4th, they'll have a chance to come in and talk with me about any concerns they may have, or so they can understand it a little bit better. Because even though you've already adopted it, because of the five days and the absences, I can't do that until second semester starts.
It's about started the second semester.
So, just so you know where I'm headed there. And it also gives them a chance to really, really look at the policy and kind of, you know, come with some questions for discussion. Then, we are working on our core values and beliefs. We are currently with a survey with the staff and community members, business partners and students. Working again, too, with the advisories. So, I was able to attend a couple of those meetings with the advisories, where students really had a great input on what they feel that graduates of Littleton High School should have, should possess, what we should be teaching them, what they're hearing, you know, what they're hearing from their, maybe their siblings that have gone before them. And also, it was great discussion. And that was, that was the seven to 12 discussion. So, I just want you to know that that went really well. Was really pleased to know that they had a lot of buy-in with that, so that, you know, as we begin to develop our core values. We're working on a curriculum fair, which is, I believe, going to be in March. Vanessa Sandville is the chairperson of that. And that is, that is kind of a second open house, if you will, but more student-led, where students will be presenting, or demonstrating, or teaching, or offering things to the community. So, they'll take what they've learned in the classroom, and they'll be able to teach someone else what they've learned, or demonstrate it, or, you know, kind of a, kind of a keeping with the core value situation of, you know, being able to demonstrate what you've learned. So, it'll be completely student-led with a little bit of intervention, I think with adults, but I mean, they're going to actually design the, and that's, that's seven to 12.
Is it for everyone?
Yes.
All the students?
Yes.
Great.
So, that'll be open up to the community, and every room will be filled with something. There'll be something going on for everything, for everyone, so. Then about the academics, we have geography spell. Jenna DeSetz, an eighth-grade student, just competed against Danny Kupkowski, and eighth-grade student and a seventh grader, Riley Johnson. And Jenna will be taking the qualifying test for the state after the holidays. And I just, not on the list is the VFW judging for the Patriots Pen Essay Contest and the Voice of Democracy Essay. Quentin Eastman is an eighth grader, won for the school and the district for the Patriots Pen Contest. And Joe DePalma, ninth grader, won for the school and the district for a Voice of Democracy Contest. They'll be competing at the state level, January 23rd, 24th in Manchester. So, that's kind of exciting for us. And sixth and seventh grade teachers continue to collaborate amongst, you know, still have those discussions, which I think are very important, and talking about the transition. And again, I get to sit in on the seventh grade discussion. And just beginning, having the seventh grade folks understand, you know, what goes on with the sixth graders and the sixth grade team, and how to really, really bridge that transition, so that it's just much easier. You know, and there's been a little bit of talk about having like a mini, like you have Rick, Friends of Lakeway, to have like a little bit of bridge gap with the seventh grade parents, to have some sort of program, so that this all of a sudden, it doesn't just drop off, and we have that kind of communication going on. So, I think that came from them, and they think that's very important, so. Guidance just had a, hosted a four alumni panel. Kids that graduated last year came in to speak to the class of 2016 about what they'd been experiencing at college, and what they wish they would have learned, or wish they had taken a little bit more seriously as they passed through, and what's been going on at school. And I think that was really, I didn't get a chance to attend that, but well-attended by the seniors, and again, hosted by the guidance department. Leadership teams exploring the improvements of the academic schedule, to see what we can do to adjust it a little bit, to actually offer more things, electives, or we're getting more AP classes. You may have heard that we were able now to offer a Spanish AP class that's being taught by Mrs. Angelias. So, that's, that's all good for our students. And we're developing a technology committee to extend the initial K to six work, so that it moves on to the seven 12. There's interdisciplinary projects going on in the middle school, so that it's pretty busy down there. And just a note about Chromebooks, that the teachers are able to now share, the students share their documents with teachers on the Google Docs, and from there, the teacher can provide immediate feedback. And that came from a person who was really not too crazy about Google Docs, but is beginning to become very familiar with it, and really likes it, so I wanted to share that with you.
Thank you. As always, Kelly's warned me to keep it brief, so you have my report. The enrollment, as you know, the enrollment really doesn't change a whole lot, but actually, we added a student in Automotive who had some experience coming from another school, so we felt we could do that. Our connections with industry and post-secondary continue. Working quite a bit with members of the industrial part on our manufacturing program. We've had several meetings in that area. They've been great to work with, giving up their time to meet with us. We've had representation from, representative, sorry, from our area community colleges, which is White Mountain Community College, even Berlin, or Littleton, and Lake Regional Community College, talking to our students about the offerings there. Many of their programs, you heard me talk before about students, if they want to get, receive a bachelor's, they could do two years locally and move on, save a little bit of money that way. We also had a former health science instructor, Mrs. Babin, talk to some of our health science classes about some opportunities there. In November, we attended a White Mountain Community College's annual event, an open house. We had 27 juniors and seniors look at some programs up there. So, we went up to Berlin. And also, on the same day, which I thought was a little strange to have it on the same day, but actually worked out really nicely, because we could transport our students on the same bus, there's a tech woman's ambassador program for ninth graders. I sent you an agenda of that, just to really try and excite young girls about the world of STEM and the many opportunities out there for them. So, students who did go enjoyed themselves. Again, partnership with Linden, trying to enhance that for broadcast. And actually, working on another articulation agreement with University of Maine at Fort Kent, regarding our nursing program. There was a rep that visited us in the fall, and was very excited about our program. So, I asked her to go back and see if she could talk to folks there. So, we're in the process of working out an agreement, so students could get college credit here at Fort Kent. Some professional development. You often hear about sixth-grade teachers and seventh-grade teachers, and you know, our Little Leopards program has been working with kindergarten teachers, trying to bridge a gap there. So, our teaching staff, Little Leopards did attend the responsive classroom training in Boston on December 8th, keeping in line with some of the training that Lakeway's been involved in in the past. And of course, we have our staff development, January 29th and March 18th here for tech folks looking at assessment practices. That's the main focus of that. And then, just some program updates. Apart from what we do in terms of our curriculum, trying to meet the competencies, automotive and building trades have been very busy, when they have time, to do some work for the Mount Eustis ski area. The auto, of course, the engine, they finished that, now they're working on the island wheels for the rope tow. And building trades, you could actually see the house now from many areas in town. We're building, I should say, a two-story building on the top of Mount Eustis. And the students enjoyed, students from different schools and Littleton enjoyed a field trip. Obviously, we had to work it out with transportation from other schools, but we took advantage of the nice weather, and the crew spent the day up there, working with community members on the building. So, it's a nice partnership. Broadcast, looking at some changes in our set. Computer Technology Systems, as you read that, you can tell that's our third foreign language. We offer French and Spanish and computer system technology. Read the language there, so our students are doing well. Essentials of Finance, Finance doing a little bit on law in terms of business, and I really haven't mentioned this year, but they continue to work with the Union Bank for Save for Success, where the students open bank accounts in their preschool and also at Lakeway, and they're able to do that once a week. Very pleased to say that our 26 students finished their clinical hours. They actually finished on Sunday at Morrison Center, Lafayette Center, and Country Village, and the Littleton Hospital. So, I want to thank all those facilities for opening our doors for our students. And our students have received very good feedback from those agencies and institutions. Teacher education, students are finishing their observations and scheduling internships for second semester. And also, this evening, they have their Little Leopards Holiday Party, which is in the cafeteria this evening. And our technology engineering, they were working with an engineering project on robotically constructed robotic marble sorter devices, which use light to sort marbles. It's quite interesting, if you, if you watch it happen. And our interns, we have a, you know, strong internship program here, and our students are finishing their fall internships, and soon to begin their second semester internship. So, it's been busy.
Good evening. Brief report. Again, showing some Power School numbers at the top. First column to show 30-day window, or month-to-month window of activity. The other columns kind of just showing the progression as we go through the school year. So, and what that data is just showing is that we add students if, you know, those new students, or students that have not been involved are getting involved with the Power School process. So, those numbers should keep increasing as we, as we move through the school year, but the percentages may go down, because you just go with a higher number. As far as parents with reports, that stayed the same for some reason with all three schools, so that's kind of where we are as far as parent notifications. Again, attended the roundtable NCS. Again, listened to some more vendors give their proposals for network infrastructure for consortium. The next meeting is next month. Last week, we had our full staff TopSync training to go over the, more like an orientation of the program, to give the details of it, how it works, what happens if I hit the button, things like that. So, now that we've done that, we can now push out the software, which we'll have by January. And then, we will do a device test in January. I think it's, what, January 8th we set as a goal? And then, once that is complete, then we will go and prepare for the district test as doing the scenario, so.
January 12th.
January 12th? Okay. January 12th. That's what it is. So, that's where we are with TopSync. Now, Lakeway, you've already heard Rick present about Lakeway, and hats off to Matt Champagne, because we just got those like, what, last week? So, so he's already deployed.
Right, Thursday, and they were in the teacher's hands by the end of Friday.
So, that's why, and again, why we've been proposing Chromebooks. You know, it really does take a lot of support as far as time and support issues, when it just drops it rapidly, so. Yeah, he deployed all of them, so. So, once we had them, we're good to go, and hopefully, we'll be able to move forward now and continue from there, so. Other than that, just get ready for the new year. Thank you.
I'll just mention that we received the, according to George Broder, he sent an email, we have the permit in hand for the demolition of the old SAU building. So, everything's going smoothly there, as far as I know. The committee has not met since our last meeting.
Okay, I think that's supposed to be done in April, is what I...
Yeah, April vacation is, yeah.
Great. Negotiations, I'd like to move that into non-public. And policy, there's no report. Superintendent's report?
It's, it's been pretty busy with support for budget, support for negotiations, support for superintendent search. It is, I did meet with representative of Project Lead the Way, intrigued by the opportunity that may present itself to push down into elementary school grades, to give kids some, a vision of why it's important to learn stuff, and how it can be applied to everyday applications. So, that will be brought to the administrative team. And the support that I've provided, I think, to the board and to these various initiatives has been pretty intense, very worthwhile, and I think it's going to result in good outcomes. We will see more of this in progress in January.
All right. Do I hear a motion to go into the public?
Make a motion. I'll make a motion and enter into the non-public session under paragraph two. Section 3 of the RSA 91A, colon, 3 of the right to no law, for numbers...
Two and three.
Two and three, taking with us the superintendent.
Superintendent?
That's it.
Do you have a second?
Second.
We'll call mode?
Cook.
Robbins. We'll get a stone. Thank you everyone for coming. Happy holiday.
Happy holidays.